Ready to go. I call the November meeting of the Library Board of Trustees to order. Our first order of business. Are there any additions or changes anyone has to the agenda? Hearing none. See no one in the gallery, so there probably are no public comments. Next, the approval of minutes for September. Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the September minutes.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Whatever's easier.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the September minutes are approved. As we conducted no business in October, we don't need to approve those minutes for October. But we did have a very good meeting and had a very good presentation from Melanie and Danny on their work. Much appreciated work. And now it's time for the reports. Director Garner?
So budget is always the first thing on our little list, so I will go ahead and go through that. The main thing you probably need to know, as we repeat every month, is that there are some, obviously, some expenditures that come out at the beginning of the year, so they look really crazy. Even more crazy than normal in some ways, but our personnel is holding right where it should, which makes me really happy because that's always one that I am the most concerned about. And then overall, the overall total library services budget is just where it needs to be, at 32%. So I think we're doing very well for this time of year. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. All right, hearing none, I can move on if you like to the library, just our budget.
Please.
I wanted to talk about the hotspots just a little bit. We have five. Well, we actually have six, but one of them is checked out. The first time it checked out, it never came back. So we got another one. The hotspots themselves are not expensive. It's the ongoing cost of having them. Monthly cost is a little high, but this year they're all on a grant. They are all checked out constantly with holds on them. So we've been looking at purchasing more. And I, so we're hoping to add at the end of this year before, if we're in good shape, another five to that mix. And then we found out that Tech Soup also has them. We didn't, Chris didn't think they had the same capabilities, our IT guy, to shut them off remotely and things like that, but they do. I investigated that a little bit. We can only buy 11. That's the most they allow you to buy randomly, 11. But they're much less expensive to operate. They're like $10 a month as opposed to the, I think it's like 30 or something that we pay for the other ones. So we're hoping to add a total of 16 more by the end of this fiscal year. I have built in the funds for that in the budget. It'll be coming up. I'll talk a little bit about that shortly. And then just that we just finalized this to annual report. It's, I'm not just, but it was due at the end of October. And so that is included in the packet for you guys to review. The numbers are bouncing back nicely to pre-COVID times. The area that we probably feel the most forlorn about is our kiddos are not coming back in the droves that we'd like. Although I have been, on Mondays, I've been, when I'm on the desk, I've been busier than normal and it's typically kiddos after school because I'm on the desk three to four. And it's really nice to see that interaction come back a little bit. But I've talked to the other librarians and it seems, one librarian told me that they thought their numbers had bounced back nicely, but her staff did not agree with her. So I don't know. But the one, Solon is the one that really did say they'd seen them come back. And that to me, I can attribute mostly to the fact that the schools are right there, walkable to the library and there's not a lot else for them maybe to do in town, where our kiddos are often scheduled out a lot more and have things going on. And our schools are not walking distance, except the elementary school, which we see those kids pretty quickly after school, most days, our regulars anyway. So the marketing, our marketing team is working on the community report that should be ready. And then I've asked them to have that done soon, like the end of next week, after we get back from Thanksgiving holiday. So hopefully, and that seems to be on the, on track to have that done. And then the next thing is the reason, and that is that our Public Libraries of Johnson County Reception that we host, legislative reception that we host every year, is set for December 5th. We're very excited to be hosting that in person again. I did include the invitation in the packet because we really love to have board support there if you're available. It's on Monday evening at 5:30. There are lovely appetizers typically, and Iowa City is hosting and they've already, Sam's on it, Sam Helmick, so I think you'll see some good things. We are still in discussions about what that'll look like. All board members are invited. We invite the legislators. We talked about inviting the Johnson County supervisors. And then Sam, who is a national advocate at the ALA level, suggested also that we invite the counselors, the city councils. I fully agree with that decision, but some of the librarians are hesitant with that. And I'm not exactly sure what the hesitance is. We've talked about it in the past, that maybe it would overshadow the library focus. But I just see us all being there as advocates and the more leadership level support we have, the better. So that discussion is still going on right now. I tend to trust Sam in their ability to determine that that's a good thing to do. So I'm hoping that we can lean that way and I would like to see our council invited. So I did mention that to them already. And I think the Ellsworth from Iowa City will back me on that one too. He hasn't chimed in yet, so. The topic is, we are focusing on youth services just because it's a fun topic. But then with youth services, then on the whole thing that we've been talking about, the importance of the diverse collections and protecting intellectual freedom. So they'll get that in there too. And it's going to be Erin from our library presenting with Angela from Iowa City. I think it'll be really good. So it'll be an interesting conversation for the evening. So if people are around it, we'd love to have you. And I will send out a reminder next week about that. Very exciting news, the art project funding came through. We got $4,000, which was a partial grant funding from the Community Foundation of Johnson County. We had asked for 10 or 11, 11. And then the friends, when I asked them for a contribution, I asked for a lot less than $5,000 and they came back and said, why don't we give you more? I did not argue. So they are donating $5,000 for that art project. And then the remaining funds are actually filled in now from Optimist Club. They just, I went, visited with them last week and they brought me a check the next day. So we have the $11,000. That art project, if you don't remember, is a mural that we're hoping to work with. We're working with United Action for Youth. They've done this in Iowa City already. So the muralists we hire will work with kids, teens in our community to design and make the art. And then we envision it being on big metal panels so that it can be movable and not mobile and not stuck in one place. We know things change in the community and especially in ours. And I wanted to ensure that that mobile would survive a building change or anything like that. So that was the reason for wanting to make it movable. We're pretty excited to get that started. We just went and accepted the check from the foundation last week, so at their annual giving event. Any questions on anything so far? All right, I'll just keep rolling. We are working on the building maintenance. And I actually wrote this before. The engineers, city engineers reached out to me and said that they had information for me. So I met with them on Friday. So the two things are the acoustical panels and the information desk are restructured, redesigned information desk. And then I'll talk about the shelving restructure that we're going to do too. I think they all are going to be really nice additions. So the acoustical panels, we'd hoped, I had hoped, we'd talked about having them go down the hallway so you could see them and they would be colorful. But the engineers came back and just the people, the design folks, and said that would darken because they'd hang lower than the lights, they would probably make it darker. And that hallway is already kind of dark during these winter months. So we don't want it any darker than it already is. But they suggested some really, really pretty bright colored panels on both sides, walking down the hallway. So we picked really bright orange and lime green and kind of a dark teal color. And I can't think of the third, like a, I can't describe, I think what color. It would be like a golden green color. Really pretty, pretty colors. And then some with pattern, with a pattern on them. I think it's going to really enhance just the look of the hallway, plus help with the noise level. If it's noisy in the hallway or in the rec center, it tends, it's even sometimes difficult. And Scott's shaking his head because he's been there on Wednesday nights. It's hard to hear at the desk. And this is something that's been on the list for a long time and finally is getting done and I'm super excited. The second piece of that is just getting rid of that information desk, that big, big, big information desk. And instead putting in a permanent desk, a fixed desk, with two smaller mobile desks that will plug in to that permanent desk, but then also be able to be unplugged and moved around with laptops. It'll be much more approachable. It's, we're super excited about it. The desks themselves, one is going to be really bright orange and the other one's going to be really bright tealy colored. So just attention, I, and then the middle, the fixed one is a nice muted tone. So I think it's going to be really, really pretty. We're very excited about it. And then on that same note, the shelving that is in front of the magazine room, if you can, where the magazines are on one side, the adult magazines. And then on the other side is the book sale. We are going to split into two units and move into the kids' area where we currently have the mobile neighborhood shelves. And those are going to be repurposed into other areas of the library. We're going, the main idea is probably not to have the ongoing book sale. We just won't have that going on all the time. But just during the, the friends will probably pick up a second book sale during the year. I'm going to have two instead of one. They've kind of already talked about that. It just didn't happen this year because time got away from us. But I think it's going to just open up that whole space. Andrew and I have been talking about it for a while. It'll fit nicely over there. So I have been getting quotes to get those end panels, two more designed that look, replicate those end panels on that shelf because we got those from Iowa Prison Industries and they are no longer doing furniture. So, but I did get a quote today that was really nice and reasonable. So I'm hopeful that that's going to be an easy move and happen sooner rather than later. The goal for the acoustic panels and the information desk is before the end of this fiscal year. So we're shooting for the end of April, just to be safe. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. So then just really, the only other thing that I have is the FY '24 budget, which I just finished entering all the numbers this afternoon and started working on the memo. I would say the biggest two, I've tried really hard to maintain a pretty even budget, simply because I want to ask, the big ask I have is to get the Adult Services Assistant position to be full-time. That position, we've just been expanding what they do a lot, having them go out and doing outreach with Amy, our Adult Services Person. They've picked up a couple of outreaches and they do a lot of in-house stuff too. Plus help Andrew with collection development and doing some of the audit, youth audit and other things. So their roles expanding fast. And the other thing that I'm really excited about is that Cory, who's in that position right now, came to me and said she has her own specific plans, personal plans, to go back to school next year and pay for herself to get some social work classes, which is something we've wanted anyway. It's a perfect fit and not something we asked her to do, just she thought it would help her job, which I love, 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 love. So we're hoping that that will happen, but there's a lot of need in the city and I fully acknowledge that. But I'm hoping that that position also then would take on the role of the Summer Lunch Coordinator. That's what I'm proposing anyway, because that's a 20-hour-a-week position for at least a few months in the summer. So if we could supplement the budget with those funds and have a permanent position for that, it would be really helpful so that we can ensure that that position, or that program is sustainable. That program has been every year sort of stressed out, people working hard to make sure it happens. Our staff's been involved pretty heavily in it. Tracy from the city has been the main spearhead of that. But I think she's kind of at the end where she's, she wants to pass the mantle. So to me, this seems like an ideal time to do this. And Erin has already, our Youth Services has already agreed to take on a role in overseeing, but they still need a coordinator onsite. So that's where this could work out well, if it, if it works and if they agree that it's a good fit. And then just another, the other increase is training. We just want to make sure that our staff is having the opportunity to go to national level trainings. We've been able to handle that this year, partly because ILA was here. So we didn't have the expense of sending people to the Iowa Library Association Conference like we normally do. But Melanie and Andrew and Danny have all had opportunities to go to training outside the state, which I think has been really beneficial. And Andrew actually spoke at the conference, so he talked about that. Maybe it was last month or maybe it's in this report, I can't remember. But that is all that I have in reports and then just the reports from the various staff. Does anybody have any questions about the staff reports? I did want to point out just that Melanie had included in her report some, some of the things that she took away from the conference that they just attended in Indiana. And I, and I did include that in here because it's kind of fun. You'll see it at the end. They made their, one of their reports look like a sail, like from a fly, circular in a flyer or in a mag, newspaper. So I thought that was kind of cool. So I wanted to share that with you guys. They got a lot of really good ideas and applicable things that they'll be able to carry forth at that conference. And that is all that I have for you.
Thank you. Shall we move on to policy review?
Oh, yes.
All right. We have three.
Let me get down there again. So the main things you'll see is just shifting around of a couple of things. The refreshments piece, we moved down under user responsibility, simply because we've had a couple of times where stuff has been left in that room, kind of messy and food in trash cans and things, probably that needs to be more just addressed so that we have the capability of addressing it and the setup of the room. And then we wanted to include something on the, that we, we do allow extensions. We already do that. But it's nowhere in writing that we will do that. So we just wanted to have that in there, if, that we would try to extend it if we could. And really, those are the only changes. There wasn't too much that we saw.
The extension change, should it read if space is available?
Yes.
Okay.
It should. Thank you for mentioning that. I need to make a note of that. I forgot to bring my little notebook in. That is each. All right. Any questions or any other things that you guys saw?
Without a, if, if no one has any objection, we can, we can approve these in one fell swoop, if you'd like.
Sure.
Yep.
It's up to you guys. The only aside I'd make about the meeting room thing is that we are looking for meeting rooms, new meeting room software. We've never been super satisfied with our current software. The app that we just got, which is MyLibro, is finally done. And they seem to be really amenable to just adding and tweaking. The developers of that software seem to be like, everything I said that we wanted that wasn't there in the meeting room reservations, they were like, we can probably do that. We can probably do that. I'm hopeful because we're like at the cusp of our agreement with the current software. So I'm just sort of holding them at bay and not paying any money to them yet, hoping we can make this transition happen.
Art?
And the art, I don't believe there were any real changes to that one. I thought there was one, but I'm not seeing it now. So maybe I'm, there wasn't anything. Oh, it is there, but you just, it doesn't, I must not attract it. So the third bullet point under purpose statement, to build inclusion, diversity, equity and access into our community. We just wanted to add that because we're trying to really envelope that in everything we do. So that is the only addition to that. Unless you guys have anything that you noticed.
Library conduct?
Yay. A few things, most of these changes are changes that were suggested by our idea committee, our Inclusion and Diversity Committee. And that was, and I've noticed there was an extra bullet point, which I'll just have to take out. Under the, we just combined some things to make it, we used disruptive verbal or physical behavior rather than saying loud talking or things like that, because that's so subjective. So that was a suggestion to them. The other thing we took out is the animals in, being only service animals. We don't have a lot of animals come through, but we do have a couple of patrons who bring their dogs in with them. And they don't cause any problems. One chugs out their stuff and leaves in seconds, keeps a dog with them the whole time. And then the other one has the dog by the computer. Mostly people just smile at them and walk by, nobody says anything. So we don't really see anything. What we did was kind of bounce, I actually talked to Nick Burgess, who's our communications person, and asked how it was worded in the, when they bring animals to events. And basically he said animals have to be on a leash and be under the owner's control. But we didn't even, we feel like that's just conduct in general. We want anybody in the building to be under control and not disruptive. So that just falls under disruptive behavior if something were to not work out there. So we decided to just remove it altogether. And then the smoking thing was just to clarify that really, you're not supposed to smoke on city property, period. So we just wanted to make that a little more clear. We do occasionally have people just smoking outside the doors that we've had to ask to step across the street and things like that. And then the final thing was also a suggestion from the idea committee, which was just to change the wording there to the staff will only intervene if needed, basically.
Is this the second year from shifting the, the tone of the conduct policy? Yeah.
Yeah, we changed to this format with the sort of table last year.
I wondered.
And tried to make it a little more gentle and less no, no, no.
Right.
And I'm sure we'll continue to find things every year. So that seems to be the way of it.
And I haven't seen any change personally on Wednesdays in anyone's conduct, given this, given this more inclusive conduct policy.
And I will update the dates. Laura had pointed out to me that the, I didn't have it updated on the art one. And I did make that update already back at the ranch, but it's not updated here. So if it's approved, I usually try to make sure I check those. That's all of them.
All right. Questions, suggestions? Nope? Does anyone want to make a motion that the slate of policies be approved as presented?
I make a motion that we approve all three policies.
All right, a second?
A second.
Hooray. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed, nay? Hearing none, the policies are approved for another year. All right. I don't think there's any old business, so let's move to new business and talk about our statement of inclusivity.
So that's what we called it. It's really up to you guys what you want to call it in the long run. I think it's just an important document to have. The other thing I'm seeing, and I'll let you guys, and it would be a little more tricky for us as a advisory board, is librarians adopting resolutions to ban book banning, which I really like. But I think we're kind of laying the groundwork, framework with these doc, with these documents that we have, which is like the statement of inclusivity kind of says that. Or maybe we want to, I don't know if we want to change the wording, but it just kind of talks about the, already what we're doing. So maybe we don't want to work it up anymore.
Are we all pretty comfortable with this reaffirmation of values?
I think in the, in the second paragraph, the last sentence, "All citizens have the right to access information and the freedom to read." I wonder if there's a more inclusive word beyond citizens, because we later say all citizenship statuses in the second to last paragraph.
Uh huh. Let me, I mean, yeah, and if you guys want to approve it with the, with the, with the whatever we can change it to, something like the same thing. Probably the same, we'd probably use just the same thing, all citizenship statuses. Or something, I'll ask Amy to help me wordsmith that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's a great point.
Yeah, but otherwise I think this looks great. Very inclusive.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve this as our statement of libraries for everyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the statement that libraries are for everyone.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Hearing none, this is our statement on inclusivity. All right. And we talked, we don't think we need to do this one as a review for a yearly review or as?
I don't think so. I think you can just review.
And as, as needed or as desired? Very good.
I can kind of put it on the radar for when we do a new strategic plan or update our strategic plan.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Then next, a procedure for public comment.
This document is sort of a combination of what they have for the city council already in place and some of their library's procedures that they've set into place that I kind of just, try to make it short and sweet, but cover all the bases.
Yep. And that's just what I was looking for when I was talking with Jenny about this was the possibility of us being overwhelmed at a meeting with public comment from a large group of, of dynamic peoples. Being able to have something that, that we know we can, not necessarily Being able to have something that, that we know we can not necessarily have to fall back on, but just have some guidelines in place.
And I could add just the word like procedures here, because I don't think it goes in the policy manual. I think it just lives here.
With, with us, right, as a, as a procedure for our, for our trustees. And of course, as Secretary Brady gets saddled with the function of timing people. Maybe an ad hoc sargent at arms if needed. Are there any questions or comments?
This is like, you guys are getting a peek into what I do for my work, but this is like a very minor edit. An individual must list his/her name. Like, we could just say their name to be more.
We do say their, and I don't know why I didn't, because we've been changing that in every other document.
I haven't seen it anywhere else, but yeah.
Probably, it could have been a copy and paste or it could have just been my own.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just my own oversight, though. And that is, aha, I see it. Two, three, four, fourth. Great. That's what I'm glad to have your eye.
Hey, sorry. I know it can be like super annoying, too.
No, that's not annoying at all. Typically, like Jen is my catch for that type of thing. Most of this was, like I said, copy and paste, but it was totally an oversight on my part.
Cool.
There's the same issue three paragraphs later as well.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Upon recognition, I see that one.
All right. With the, the change of the, his/her plural.
Do I have, am I misreading this? Do I have like three in some places and two in some places where it should be all one or the other?
No, it should be three and two, because one is the normal amount of time, the other one's if there's an excess of people.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. I just couldn't wrap my head around it.
I read it like three times to say the same thing. I was like, why are we changing it? But no, it makes sense.
All right. And I will add an adopted thing at the bottom of that one, too, or approved thing. No, if you guys approve it.
So with the edits of making it a procedure and not a policy and the use of the singular there, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
All right. Do we have a second?
One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the procedure is approved. That looks like it brings us to the end of this November meeting.
Which I honestly really thought, oh my gosh, it's going to be such a long meeting with all this stuff on it, that I told, that I said, we don't need to have anybody come this time, because it seems like a lot of buildup to get here. These deal ads are so cool.
Aren't they fun?
They're great, yeah.
Yeah, I hope they come up with something similar.
At the very end, yeah.
There's a lot of pages to scroll through.
There is a lot. I debated not including the whole report in there, but it's just so interesting to see those numbers.
Right.
Yeah, this is very cool.
And typically I can run it so it shows last year's and this year's, and for some reason it got lost in translation and then it wouldn't let me go back. So you can't see them both, but they are significantly better than last year, half the year off, out of COVID times, so.
Do we need RSVP for the Monday, December 5th?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And there is an email on there to RSVP, but you can also just let me know and I can email Sam a total count if everybody wants to let me know. But yes, it'd be really wonderful if people can attend.
I have attended them in the past. I'll see if I can. Monday, December 5th.
Oh, and the pictures didn't come out in the, I, oh, because I gave you guys the wrong update. That's okay. I'll put the right update somewhere else. The update at the bottom is not the current update. It is part of one that I start. I always start the next one so I can remind myself to do things. Apparently I did that instead of including the one, but. All right.
All right. Having come to the end, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
We are adjourned.